Good evening, I'm gonna go ahead and get started here at seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the December 21st, 2020 City Council Meeting to order. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
This meeting is being recorded and or transcribed.
Which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I need to, before we start, confirm that all our City Council members are present and here for the record. I'm gonna go ahead and start with the City Council members. David George, are you on? I know he was just getting home, so I think we'll give him a few minutes. Todd Zimmerman?
Here.
Brad DeRiemer?
Present.
Sam DeLong?
Here.
John Weingard?
Here.
Jocelyn Bear?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Selena Stoller?
Here.
And Cecilia Kobo, I'm here. And David George, are you on? Okay, we'll wait a few minutes for David. Can I have any staff members that are present here this evening to identify themselves for the record, please?
Megan Baumgartner, City of Fisher's Director of Economic and Community Development.
Tony Bugatto, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Jesse Bouchelle, Planning and Zoning.
Ross Taylor, Planning and Zoning.
Trevor Freddy, Planning and Zoning.
Lisa Bradford, Controller.
Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources.
Chris Greisel, City Attorney.
Sorry, Chris.
Monica Hight, Director of Public Health.
Thank you.
Jason Taylor, Director of Engineering.
And David George, Councilor David George, are you here now?
Yes, I just jumped on, Cecilia, thanks.
Great, thank you. So all the City Council members are present. I want to remind anyone that's on the call this evening that with, due to the rising COVID numbers in our community and in accordance with federal, state, and local guidance, including recent guidance put forth by the Fisher's Health Department, we're conducting tonight's council meeting virtually. Tonight's council meeting is being livestreamed. Additionally, the council has provided the public with opportunities to participate in this meeting by submitting comments through the city's website. Any comments received have been distributed to the council and will be included in the minutes for tonight's agenda. Finally, although there is limited capacity due to COVID, the City Hall Auditorium is open for members of the public to view and participate in tonight's council meeting. With the exception of the consent agenda, we will take a roll call vote on all items being voted upon tonight.
President Kobo?
Yes.
Sorry, just for a second, this is Chris Greisel. Tonight, our Deputy Clerk Kim Greiner is subbing in and filling in for Jennifer Steele. And Kim has asked me to get all of your consent with having electronic participation for your vote, so assuming nobody objects to that here, Kim is gonna go ahead and proceed with recording your votes electronically.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any announcements this evening. We do not have any proclamations or presentations, so we're gonna move on to the Finance Committee Report by Chairman John Weingard for this month's report. Are you there, John?
I am here, I apologize.
No, no.
Thank you, President Kobo. And I, tonight, the Finance Committee meeting last week, and we recommend for approval, Item 6B, C, and D, and on the budget financial, Item 11, 12, and 13. In particular, tend to Item D. In accordance with the CARES Act, we are receiving reimbursement from the federal government for our costs. That'll be transferred back to General Fund, at a minimum of $1.5 million to a maximum of $1.9 million. That will go back to get our money. So we're well on our way. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, John. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have four items. Item A is a request to approve the regular meeting minutes from the Council's November 16, 2020 Regular Meeting and Executive Session. Item B is a resolution authorizing the City Controller to transfer certain funds. Item C is a resolution authorizing the City Controller to transfer certain funds from the Rainy Day Fund to the General Fund. And Item D is a resolution authorizing the City Controller to transfer certain funds from the Health Department Fund to the General Fund. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by John Weingard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena Stoller, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes, we're gonna move on to the regular agenda, our economic development portion. R122120F is a request to approve a confirmatory resolution designating certain property as an economic revitalization area and authorizing an abatement for Incog. This is in a public hearing today, and here to introduce the resolution is Megan Baumgartner.
Thank you, Councilwoman President. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic and Community Development for the City of Fisher. This is the final approval step for Incog Biopharma and their economic development agreement, which was brought before council in October. So for reference, they have purchased the land, or they're working to finalize the purchase of land off of Exit 5 Parkway. Up on the screen right now are their statement of benefits that they've submitted for their personal property tax abatement, which council will recall is a 13-year, it's a super abatement, the first one that we've done for the city, as well as a two-year real property tax abatement. The jobs are consistent with what we had provided in our EDA for them in October, so this is contemplating their first phase of the project, and happy to answer any questions about this one.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, anyone there present today? Chris Greisel, do we have anyone at City Hall that's there to speak?
Yeah, Tracy, if you could ask if anybody who is present tonight is ready for the public hearing, and we'll give them just a minute, whether they're there or not. We did not receive any comments generated for this public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Do we know if we have anybody there?
Apologies, I was muted, this is Tracy. We have one spectator, one citizen in the audience, but she is not here to speak on any issue, just observing.
Okay. With that, I guess I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and do I have a motion to approve Resolution R122120F?
So moved.
Is that Selena?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Selena Stoller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd Zimmerman. And now I'm gonna open it up for a discussion. I'll ask every council member if they have any additional comments or questions. Todd Zimmerman?
No, I have none, thank you.
Okay, Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
Brad DeRiemer?
No comments or questions.
John? John Weingard?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Jocelyn Bear?
No comments, no questions, thank you.
Okay, David George?
No comments or questions either, thanks.
Okay, Pete Peterson?
No comments or questions.
And Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any comments or questions at this time. I'm now gonna go ahead and call for a vote on Resolution R122120F, the request to approve a confirmatory resolution designating certain property as an economic revitalization area and authoring an abatement for Incog. And so I'll ask Kim to take the roll call vote, thank you. Cecilia Kobo? Aye. Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingard?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Brad DeRiemer?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to Item Number 7 in the economic development portion of, Item 8, I'm sorry. Item 8 is a request to approve the First Amendment of an economic agreement with Strongbox. So, these next two agenda items, R122120G and R122120H, go together, and Megan Baumgartner will discuss both of those at the same time. Item 9 is a request to approve an economic development agreement with Memory Venture. So I'll go ahead and have Megan Baumgartner do the presentation for Items 8 and 9.
Thank you again for the record, Megan Baumgartner, City of Fisher's Director of Economic and Community Development. So tonight, the first item is an amendment to our economic development agreement with Strongbox, who is the current owner of 8766 East 96th Street. So that is the former Marsh located at the intersection of 96th and Lantern Road. If councilor members, a year ago, we brought forward the first agreement. The plan was for them to redevelop the site, build some outlots, and most likely put a fitness user into the space. As part of that, council had waived their impact fees and permitting fees for the two outlots along 96th Street. And in exchange for the additional redevelopment, they were also, Strongbox was also going to purchase license plate readers for a certain area of 96th Street in conjunction with our Fisher's Police Department. Fast forward, COVID hits, the fitness users that were considering the site decided that they were no longer going to be pursuing new development projects, and we started working with Strongbox on what could be the right fit for that space. It's such an important corner for our city, with all the work that's happening along 96th Street for infrastructure improvements, the new roadwork that's been done, we knew that it's a really important spot. So we had a great opportunity come about with Anderson Show and Rock with Memory Ventures. Many council have met Anderson before, many in our community are familiar with him. So he moved his family and his business from Los Angeles to Fisher's in 2014. His plan has always been to find some sort of piece of real estate to make his actual home for his business. So he's been leasing space throughout Fisher's for the last few years, and so when we started to talk to him about this site, he was definitely interested, had been interested in it before, but the stars just didn't align until just recently. So tonight, what we're proposing for council is a 10-year vacant building tax abatement for Anderson to redevelop this site. So that is our second agreement, it's Item 9, I believe, is the economic development agreement with Anderson. That vacant building tax abatement, if council recalls, we just recently did at the old Roche Headquarters Building, the 10-300 Kincaid. So under state law, if a building is vacant for commercial use, non-retail use, and changed to that use, it can receive a vacant building tax abatement. I believe we've talked to council before, but the state of that building has not been great. There's been a lot of vandalism, a lot of disrepair, so it needs a lot of work on the inside. But in addition to that, because it's such an important intersection, we also asked Anderson to go above and beyond. So as part of his commitment to the city, he's committing to at least a million dollars worth of renovations, both on the inside and exterior. Part of that is completely redoing the parking lot, moving his corporate headquarters to this new home, so he has 85-plus employees and plans to grow soon as well, and also is committing to public art on either the eastern or western side of his building. We have Anderson on here tonight, and Anderson, if you have a few words that you'd like to share with council about what this property means for you and your goals with this site?
Sure. Well, thank you everybody for looking at this item. We're excited as a business to be looking at this opportunity. I've driven by that building, we're currently located over in the Crosspoint Development, and I've driven by that building every day, thinking something neat could happen with it, and so we're excited that the opportunity has come up that we could take that building and make it our headquarters. We're looking forward to renovating the building, returning it to a usable space. As most of you are aware, not only has there been some vandalism in the property, but even prior to that, you know, with Marsh trying to kind of sustain their business, a lot of corners were cut. So the building has been kind of long overdue, I think, for, you know, kind of a renovation and a rehab, so we're excited to get in. This property will allow us to more than double, so we're actually at about 100 employees right now. We think this building will accommodate us up to at least 250, maybe beyond, depending on how we ultimately design the space. So we're really excited about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have about what we're planning on doing there.
Thank you, Anderson. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution R1221R, I'm sorry, R122120G?
I'll make a motion approve.
Okay, motion by John Weingard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David George, okay. I'm now gonna go ahead and open it up for discussion, and so for discussion purposes, I'll go and ask each council member if they have any comments. Todd Zimmerman?
No comments or questions.
Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
Brad DeRiemer?
No comments or questions, thank you.
John Weingard?
Anderson, way to go, really looking forward to have you down in our downtown that building. So congratulations, and looking forward to having you have a bigger footprint here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Jocelyn Bear?
I do have one comment and one question. First of all, the comment, I love the addition of the public art installation option, I think that's fabulous. So thank you for everything, but thank you for that, I really enjoy that. And then, could you, someone, address just a little bit more information, 16,000 square foot rental, excuse me, retail outlaw development, can you explain more of that part?
Yes, thank you, I realized as we were going through this for the amendment. So originally, Strongbox was committing to building, I believe, a 10,000 square foot building along 96th Street. Excuse me, as part of this change, they're now adding an additional outlaw along Lantern Road, which would be a 16,000 square foot building. So they are asking for council to approve the waiver of fees on that building instead, not the two outlots, and then they will also proceed with the commitments for the four license plate readers.
Great, thank you.
And there are two, I believe at least one member of Strongbox, the development group who currently owns the building on the call as well, if there's any particular questions for them.
Okay, thank you. David George, do you have any questions?
No, just a couple of comments. Anderson, thank you for investing. I know that it's a great move, as you moved east to Indiana, and I'm glad that you like it, I'm glad that you've grown, and we wish you all the best success. I guess I kind of date myself, because I remember when that building was built. And just for Strongbox and Megan in particular, thank you very much. I think, I know we've gone through more than just the two that you mentioned, Megan, but there's been several over the years, and this is probably the best use, because this is gonna have daytime employees, and those employees are going to use the existing restaurants and the other retail. So I think of all the options that we've had, this is headed in just a great direction. So thank you, everybody, for putting this together, that's it.
Thanks, David. Pete Peterson?
No comments or questions.
Okay, and Selena Stoller?
I just want to say thank you for your persistence on this, Megan, and thank you for your investment, Anderson. Looking forward to the revitalization in this area.
Thank you, Selena. Anderson, can you just share for anyone that may not be familiar with your company, like what you do?
Sure, absolutely. So Memory Ventures originally started as a business called Scan Digital when I was in California in 2007, and that's still one of our primary business units, and what Scan Digital is focused on is helping consumers around the country usher all of their out-of-date media, so old photo albums, videotapes, all that sort of stuff that's lying around in shoeboxes. We help people convert all of that into digital format. And then, over the years, as we've grown and developed the strategies for the business, we've also acquired a couple of other e-commerce retail sites, so we also have a wall decor lineup where you can get your family pictures put onto a canvas or other sort of wall art. So that's what we'll be fulfilling out of this production facility, and, you know, most of our employees are working with consumers' media from all over the country. So we get stuff shipped in via UPS, process it all here right in Fisher's, and send it back to people.
Wonderful. Well, I'm super excited about the possibilities there and revitalizing that area, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and call a vote for Resolution R122120G, request to approve the First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement with Strongbox, and I'll ask Kim Greiner to take a roll call vote, please. Sorry, I was muted. Cecilia Kobo?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingard?
Aye.
Brad DeRiemer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes. I'm gonna move to Item 9, R122120H, the request to approve an economic development agreement with Memory Venture. Ventures, I'm gonna go ahead and call for a motion to approve?
Council President Kobo, I think you already have a motion on the table to approve.
For number nine.
You have a motion already and a second, I believe.
For number nine? Who was it?
Let's just go, let's go ahead for the record and have it again. Can somebody make a motion for this item, please?
I'll move to approve, this is David.
David George, okay?
Yeah, I'll second that, Todd.
Okay, Todd, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a vote on R122120H, request to approve an economic development agreement with Memory Venture. Cecilia Kobo?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingard?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Brad DeRiemer?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes, congratulations, Anderson. We're gonna move on to Item 10, dealing with government miscellaneous items, and Item 10 is 122120, to request to approve an amendment to the City of Fisher's salary ordinance. And here to do his presentation is Ethan Lee.
Good evening, for the record, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources. I'm here to propose an amendment to the city's salary ordinance. This amendment would add job title of Director of Business Solutions Group and Director of Employee and Customer Success. These additions are added to better align current job role with better title of, with existing positions. These are not new headcount or new positions, only updating the titles that we have available to assign. Available for any questions at this time?
Okay. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and approve the ordinance on first reading?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules in first reading.
Motion by John Weingard, do I have a second? Second by Selena Stoller, do any council members have any questions or comments regarding suspending the rules? None, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 122120, approving an amendment to the City of Fisher's salary ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Todd Zimmerman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena Stoller?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for any discussion or comments. Todd Zimmerman?
None, thank you.
Okay, Sam DeLong?
Nothing for me.
Brad DeRiemer?
Nothing, thank you.
John Weingard?
No questions, thank you.
Jocelyn Bear?
Ethan, do these new position titles replace a different position title that used to be?
In a sense, yes. We're not eliminating those titles, because they may be available for future positions, but they would be, in a sense, replacing those at this time.
I understand, okay, thank you.
David George?
No comments or questions.
Pete Peterson?
None.
Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions.
Okay, I don't have any comments or questions, so I'm now gonna go ahead and call for a vote on Ordinance 122120, amending the Fisher's salary ordinance, and I'll ask Kim Greiner to take a roll call vote. Cecilia Kobo?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingard?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Brad DeRiemer?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Number 11, it's budget, it's the budget and financial portion of our agenda, R122120C, it's a request to approve additional appropriation of sewer funds, and this is a public hearing with this request, and so- And so here to introduce the resolution is Lisa Bradford.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. If I may, I want to talk about Item 11 and 12 just together because they're kind of interrelated. 11 is the additional appropriation of sewer funds. 12 is the additional appropriation of stormwater funds. So the additional appropriation for sewer is a request of $50,000. And during the course of the year, we had some unexpected expenses in the sewer fund related to some projects, related to software conversion, and then also related to some print and mail issues during the midst of the pandemic. And so we are doing this additional appropriation basically just in case. I think when it's all said and done, we'll have enough money in the sewer fund. But just in case, we wanted to go ahead and advertise and have the public hearing for our additional appropriation for the sewer fund. And the same thing happened in the stormwater fund also, which is the request for the $30,000, just some projects and some costs that came up this year somewhat related to the software conversion. And then again, with print and mail in the middle of the pandemic. If there are any questions from the council, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Lisa. Chris, do we have any people wishing to speak there at City Hall? I'm going to go ahead and open it up for the public hearing.
Tracy, can you confirm?
Yep, no one's here to present on this.
Thank you. And President Kobel, nobody sent in comments regarding these two public hearings, I do.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public comments. And I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve Resolution R 122120C.
So moved.
Motion by John Weingart, do I have a second?
Second by David.
Second by David George, okay. I'll open it up for any discussion, comments, or questions. Todd Zimmerman?
No comments or questions.
Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
Brad DeRimer?
No comments or questions.
John Weingart?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Jocelyn Bear?
None, thank you.
Okay, David George?
None for me, thanks.
Pete Peterson?
None.
Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions.
Okay. I'm now going to go ahead and call for a vote on Resolution R 122120C, to request to approve the additional appropriation of sewer funds. And I'll ask Kim to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Brad DeRimer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to Item 12, R 122120D. This is also open for a public hearing. Chris or Tracy, do we have anybody? I'm assuming we don't.
We do not, President Kobel.
Okay. I'll close the comment here, the public hearing. And I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution R 122120D.
So moved. This is David.
A motion by David George, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selena Stoller. I'll go ahead and ask city council members if they have any comments or questions. Todd Zimmerman?
None.
Sam DeLong?
Nothing.
Brad DeRimer?
No comments or questions.
John Weingart?
No questions, thank you.
Jocelyn Bear?
No, thank you.
David George?
None for me, thanks.
Pete Peterson?
None.
And Selena Stoller?
None, thank you.
So I'll go ahead and, thank you. I'll go ahead and call for a vote on R 122120D, the request to approve additional appropriation of stormwater funds. And Kim Greiner, can you please take a roll call vote? Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Brad DeRimer?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes. We're going to move on to Item 13, Resolution R 122120E. It's a request to appropriate 2020C and 2020D bond proceeds. This does require a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and ask Lisa Bradford to introduce the resolution.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. So the item before you is a procedural step. So previously, at the council meeting, we have approved the issuance of the 2020C and D bonds. And so what this does is allow us to actually spend the bond proceeds. Procedurally, we usually do this the same time we authorize the bonds, but we did not do that this time for a variety of timing reasons. So therefore, this month, we're asking you to approve the appropriation of the bond proceeds that were previously authorized.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Chris, is there anyone there at City Hall wishing to speak?
No, there's nobody here wishing to speak at City Hall, and there's no comments submitted for this, President Kobel.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to approve Resolution R 122120E?
So moved.
Motion.
Motion by Selena Stoller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John Weingart. And now I'm going to go ahead and open it up for discussion, comments, or questions by the city council members. Todd Zimmerman?
None.
Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
Brad DeRimer?
No comments or questions.
John Weingart?
No questions, thank you.
Jocelyn Bear?
What are the projects that this funds? Could you remind us, please?
This is the one-year general appropriate, the one-year GO bond. So it's the variety of road projects that engineering has. So a lot of, if I believe correctly, neighborhood resurfacing, road resurfacing, things like that. A lot of maintenance and prevention projects.
Okay, thank you.
David George, do you have any comments?
None for me, thanks.
Pete Peterson?
None.
Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call a vote on Resolution R 122120E, a request to appropriate 2020C and 2020D bond proceeds. Kim, could I please ask you to take a roll call vote? Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Brad DeRimer?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes. And we're going to move on to Item 14. We are now moving to the planning and zoning items on our agenda. Resolution R 1221201 is a request to approve pre-annexation agreement for certain property that is located at 11110 East 106th Street in Fishers. And I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney Chris Greisel for the presentation.
Thank you, Council President Kobel, members of the council, for the record. Chris Greisel, City Attorney. Happy to be presenting on this item for you. In conjunction with the Planning and Zoning Department, we're bringing forward this request to approve a pre-annexation agreement for your consideration. As most of the council members know, annexation right now, under the statutory scheme provided by Indiana law, is almost impossible if it's not voluntary. And the property owners here, Ben and Stacy Sunderman, acquired property along East 106th Street. This property is located just outside of Hoosier Road. You have Windermere to the south, indirectly a budding, some larger real estate lots. And the Sundermans came to us not knowing whether or not they were going to annex into the city, not knowing what they were going to develop or how they were going to develop a single-family residential home. And a goal of ours all along was to continue to incorporate the city and continue to incorporate Swiss cheese, as a lot of the council knows that we have still within our jurisdiction. And so before you today is an agreement with the Sundermans that allows the Sundermans to develop their property into a single-family residential home. Allows, but will require them to annex into the city. It'll require them to comply with our Unified Development Ordinance, which includes without limitation the planning process. And why this is important for some of you who may not be on the Plan Commission is because that requires and necessitates that the property owner or the developer dedicates certain property to the city. And that property dedication is significant. Oftentimes, when the City of Fishers has to go out and do future road infrastructure projects, whether it's road widening or other capital projects, oftentimes, we have to acquire additional right of way, either by acquisition or condemnation. And as some of the conversations we've had tonight, starting in work session, you all know that land prices here in Fishers are going up exponentially. So to be able to have property dedicated to the city for right-of-way purposes is a great saving. The Sundermans are also going to make a payment, which represents their portion and their obligation to construct a trail outside of their home. And we do this with property owners where we anticipate future infrastructure projects so that we're not going in and tearing up new infrastructure. So this portion of payment is given to the city so that the city can apply it to its infrastructure project when it goes in to the nearby area. In consideration for this, as I mentioned, the Sundermans are annexing the property into the city, which is a strategic acquisition for the city to be able to incorporate an additional five acres of property in an area that doesn't have a lot of incorporated pockets to it. And we're going to be considering an annexation abatement, which is something that we haven't considered in a while. And to be clear, the annexation abatement is provided under Indiana's annexation statutes, not Indiana's economic development statutes. So the annexation waiver or the annexation abatement that's provided under Indiana law allows the council to abate the new taxes on this property on a three-year schedule at 75%, 50%, and 25% as an incentive to get somebody to come into the city. So remember, today, currently, we are not collecting any city tax on this property. And as a mechanism to try to get this property to come into our tax base, we've offered this incentive to allow the property owner to take annexation a little bit more enticing. We've also identified certain fee waivers that are outlined in the agreement that will allow the Sundermans to waive certain development fees and have access to public sewer and to get them connected to public sewer, which is also an important infrastructure investment. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution R 1221201?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by John Weingart, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd Zimmerman. I'll open it up for discussion by the city council members. Todd Zimmerman, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Okay. Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
Brad DeRimer?
No comments or questions.
John Weingart?
Always good to get stuff annexed, and good job, Chris. Thank you.
Jocelyn Bear?
Pardon, no comments, thank you.
David George?
No, Chris gave an ice summary, thanks.
Okay. Pete Peterson?
None.
Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions.
Okay, I'm now going to call for a vote on Resolution R 1221201, a request to approve pre-annexation agreement for certain property located at 11110 East 106th Street. And I'll ask Kim Greiner to take a roll call vote. Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Brad DeRimer?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Item 15. It's 111620A. It's the consideration of a rezone of 118.75 acres from an R2 to a PUDR. The property is located at the corner of 113th Street and Southeastern Parkway. The project is known as the Grandham PUD, and this is the final reading. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Tony Bogato for his presentation.
Good evening, Council President. Tony Bogato, Director of Planning and Zoning. I'll be sharing my screen for the presentation, so let me know if you're not seeing it. Is everyone seeing that? So in front of you is the Grandham PUD. Again, this property, if you can see, if anyone's seen the map, the location is between Southeastern Parkway and 113th Street. This item was before the council previously in October. It was a larger PUD that incorporated some estate residential zoning today for some smaller, second living, kind of, or senior living style housing, smaller lots. And again, those have been removed. So with the change in the project, they came back to Plan Commission. And under the comp plan, it's designated for low-density suburban residential. So again, that range is anywhere from one to two dwelling units per acre. This project is within that range, so it is consistent with the comp plan. It is zoned R2 as well, and they're proposing a PUD with an R2-based zoning. And again, I'll highlight this estate residential was the area before that was removed, as well as they removed the area along 113th and Southeastern, right at the corner. So here's the new PUD in front of you tonight. Again, this is something staff's been supportive of. They're providing tree preservation area along 113th and within the project where acceptable between the residents. They're providing buffer yards and meeting the overall standards of R2's density, where they're at 200 units total. And under the density, they can have 200, between 200 and 214. They're providing 35% open space, where the PUD requires a minimum of 20. And then you'll see the architectural standards, as well as they're providing enhanced architecture and standards to the lots adjacent to the estate lots to the west. And then they're keeping the gated entrance off 113th Street, as well as a commitment to keep as many trees as possible, which we've worked with our engineering department. And they believe that a significant number of the trees should be able to remain. There will be some removed as part of an XL, a decal lane into the project. But again, they feel that most of them will remain. Here's the architecture of the homes, which went through a PUD committee now twice and has received support. At the PUD, the second time around, they did introduce some new homes for some more variety, which again, was approved by the PUD committee and supported by staff. We think these provide some nice architecture and variety. And these are all in the Executive District, so these are the homes you would see within that portion on 113th Street. And then these are the homes that were shown previously for the Family District that they're continuing with. And this is closer to Southeastern Parkway and Cynthia Ann, so this ties into the connection with Walthall Springs and is more Family District oriented. Here's a comparison I wanted to show of, so on the left-hand side is the PUD that's being proposed today. And again, it's 200 lots with 35% open space. And on the right-hand side is the council plan we received for what they can plat under R2, because again, it is zoned R2 today. So without a PUD, they can come in and file this month, next month, early on, for going to the plat committee and just basically meeting plat requirements for their legal rights under the zoning. And this plat here shows within the area that the PUD is 214 lots. The plat does show some additional lots here, but that's not being considered as part of the PUD. But again, this is also zoned R2, so they can come in, anyone can come in and try to plat something like this as long as it met the UDO standards, or they received a waiver from the plat committee. or they received a waiver from the plat committee. By comparison, I want to show again the development standards. So on R2 is our left-hand side. The average lot's about fifteen thousand square feet in R2. These lots are going to range between eleven thousand and ninety-five hundred. So this is where PUDs, your lot flexibility, if you think you're getting a better development, are we willing to accept trade-offs? And so here's one where they are showing smaller lots than R2, but then they're providing additional open space where under R2, they only need ten percent, and they're showing thirty-five percent with this PUD. In their regular R2, there's no buffer yards required. And here they are providing buffer yards and trees that they're preserving in the development where they can. And then also, no tree preservation's required under R2, and they're preserving them on 113th Street. And then under architectural, here's a sample home that can be built under the UDO and according to R2 and under the basic standards. And then here's one of the models that we saw today that PUD approved. So again, we believe we're getting higher homes than what can be done under the PUD. And we're getting more standards and better trade-off with just as many lots that's allowed by right. I wanted to point out also, we've had some discussions at Plan Commission and I think last time, City Council, about other PUDs that have R2 zoning. And so these PUDs all have R2 as the base zoning. You have Britton Falls, Cynthia Anne Meadows south of there, Vermillion, Reserve at Steeplechase, Gray Eagle, Sandstone, the Haven are some of the ones we picked up today. But I'll highlight, like in Britton Falls, their lot sizes range from nine thousand to eleven thousand. So none of those meet the fifteen thousand. In Gray Eagle, they average two point five units per acre, where the minimum or the maximum density in R2 is two. So they're higher density, even though it's zoned R2 than under the base zone. And then in Vermillion, those lot sizes range from anywhere from seventy-eight hundred to seventeen thousand square feet. So again, you have lots there that are smaller than the fifteen thousand square feet. In Sandstone, that is also two point five units per acre, so they're more dense than what R2 would allow by right. The Reserve at Steeplechase, that's at one point seven five, so that's slightly over because again, the range is one point seven is the max. The Haven PUD over here at 106th Street, those are all sixty-eight hundred square feet. So that's almost half the size of, or less than half the size of R2 allows fifteen thousand square feet. Cynthia Anne Meadows is the only one recently that all these lots are over the fifteen thousand square feet. So again, when we talk about PUDs and why staff supports them or would not support them is we have to look at what we believe, are we getting something better than what the UDO allows by right? And in this case, we do believe we are getting something better. We believe that these PUD lot sizes are consistent with much of the other R2-based zones of the PUD. And again, this is all the preliminary level. So anything for construction, we'll go through that process and will be reviewed at a later time. We had several emails over the weekend about drainage, and this would not be required to be reviewed by the county because there is no regulated drain, as well as once this property develops, it will be annexed. So it'll be reviewed by the city anyways when they, after they annex. With that, staff is here to answer your questions. It did go back to Plan Commission, and we'll note that we were at the bare minimum of a quorum, and we had a vote of five to two in favor. But because we didn't have a majority, we needed six votes in yes for a recommendation to pass. So it was, it is here tonight with no recommendation from the Plan Commission because we did not have six votes in favor or against it. But we did have a five to two motion to try to approve it that didn't, again, pass because we didn't have six. So, but overall, it did pass the first time around with a larger PUD. And the PUD committee and Plan Commission were both supportive previously. And staff's in support as well and available to answer any questions. I think the petitioner is also on the line if there's any additional feedback from them.
Thank you, Tony. Would the petitioner like to share some more information, Steve Harden or Paul Rio?
Good evening, this is Steve. Nice to see everybody. The only, Tony did a great job of updating. I would just comment that Paul Rio has done a great job of reaching out and talking and walking the property lines with any of the neighbors that have reached out to him and accepted his invitation throughout the process. And one thing that Tony didn't mention that we did update, we had one of the council members, Council Member DeReemer, had requested if the builders could try to enlarge the side setback. So that was something that was added between first, following the last time and now. And so you'll see in there for the family section, there's a fourteen-foot separation between home minimum. It was previously ten feet, so that was expanded. And beyond that, I think Tony did a great job, and everybody's probably pretty familiar with the project, so I'll stop talking. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we respectfully request your support and approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 111620A?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by John Weingart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pete Peterson. Okay, I'm going to now go ahead and open it up for discussion by the city council members if they have any comments or questions. Todd Zimmerman?
I have no comments or questions.
Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
Brad DeReemer?
Yeah, I've got quite a few if you don't mind. That, Tony, that R2 that you showed, the copy of that that I have painted showed eighty by one hundred-foot lots. R2 is one hundred foot wide, so that proposed R2 is very misleading. Don't appreciate something being presented to us that is not truthful. To the tree situation, I understand the beauty of the trees going down 113th. But on a personal note, when I was mayor in Greenfield back in 2081, we had the very unfortunate thing on a Sunday after church, a, not my church, but a minister and his wife and two kids were going home, and a tree fell and killed the minister, his wife, and two kids survived. I had another situation where two teenagers were going along the north border of Greenfield with a slight S-curve, missed the curve and hit a tree and killed the driver. We then went on a campaign of removing trees that we thought would fall or would be in the way of a car in the city's right-of-way. We then went back, and any tree that we felt was dangerous on private property, we tried to obtain permission from a landowner to take it down. So even though it is beautiful going down 113th, from personal experience, I'm telling you, we're asking for a problem. The minimum I would request is in the Parks Department, I think they have an arborist, if she's still there, she worked with us out here in Britton Falls, to check all those trees, spray paint the ones in orange that need to be taken out. And I think we need to take them out. But this is serious. We're just going to look for some kind of problem in the future. So, and that comes from personal experience, unfortunately, with pre-bet. The other thing, Steve, I appreciate your side setback, but the proposal you gave us tonight still shows the five foot in both family and executive. So I can't approve something where it's not what you're verbally telling us that you pretended to the city. The rear setback, I still have a problem with that. We have a tremendous problem out in Britton Falls with that rear setback. You can't even get a patio on your back. We have some special ordinances just for Britton Falls. And the best you can do is a ten-foot patio. Mine, because of the, configure my lots, twenty-foot patio. So the rear setbacks are still not where I would like to see. The other comment that I would like to make, this is a personal comment. I want to preface, if I offend somebody, I'll apologize beforehand. If I'm wrong, anybody, please feel free to correct me. I've been on the Fisher City Council for five years. I'm a civil engineer, Lancerare, made my living with thirty-seven years in the planning subdivision, sat on Plan Commissions for sixty years, and a mayor running the city. So I've got the experience that I feel I can say. Every city hires a professional consultant to do zoning. We pay a lot of money to help us do our zoning. Then, to the credit of the mayor, he fought greater than five years and put together the 2040 Plan, which I think is just fantastic, that we spent all that time, money, and effort to do a 2040 Plan for the future. The reason you do zoning is to protect the existing landowners with their ownership and their investment and what you vision the future of your city to look like. That is why we have zoning. But every project that I've been involved with and dug in the city council has been a PUD, which changes the zoning ordinance. The one tonight is changing it from an R2 to an R3 and an R5. And it seems like every development we do, we ignore the zoning and we ignore the 2040 Plan. I'm getting frustrated with it. Steve and Paul don't take it personally, but I'm to the point where if we're not going to observe our own zoning and 2040 Plan, then let's get rid of the zoning map, zone everything agriculture, get rid of Tony's apartment because it wouldn't be needed, and just let the developers do what they want with a PUD. I think Fishers needs to stand up and abide by their zoning or let's just change it and quit wasting taxpayers' money for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brad. John Weingart, do you have any comments or questions?
Only comments I'll have. Appreciate everybody's comments. You know, I just look at the PUD and I look at the R2, look how it's platted. I just like the PUD better, and I'm going to be supportive of it tonight.
Okay. Jocelyn Bear?
I do not have any comments or questions that haven't already been stated. Thank you.
Okay, David George?
No real comments or questions. The only thing I'm still kind of weighing with, and I talked to Paul today, I think they've done a great job putting things together. But the thing I still weigh with is you've got a great estate home, and many times you're trying to get businesses to come. And you need the, it wouldn't be a home I live in, but, or could afford, but it'd be the people that run those businesses need to have those estate-type homes. And I know whichever way you vote, it's still probably going to go away, but it's just hard to vote for it. And in essence, in my opinion, voting to remove an estate-type home. So that's just what I'm weighing with. Other than that, I think they've done a good job trying to put things together, removing the much, much smaller homes, and that'd be it. Thanks.
Okay. Pete Peterson?
A couple of comments, I guess, from my standpoint. And I think we have Jason who is there, and the audience are on the phone. And Jason, maybe you can speak to what happens at TAC Committee as it relates to the tree line there. As my understanding, when staff looks at that, one of the things they look at is obviously safety of the roadway. And if it is deemed to be unsafe by your standards and/or, you know, our consultant's standards, which I believe is A&amp;F Engineering, they will sow a pine during that TAC Committee. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're correct, Councilman Peterson. The engineering department, during the TAC review process, will review the plans, the construction detail drawings, and compare them to national standards as well as our local standards and ensure safety is being followed as well as traffic mobility in the area.
Thanks, Jason. Then additionally, I believe the 2040 Plan has designated this as low-density housing. So it does the 2040 Plan. I will remind council that there was an area along 126 and Olia Road, which I vehemently was not in favor of rezoning those commercials. They were also in there as residential. So, and there's a number of people who've made comments already who went against me since the vote was eight to one. Again, I tried to stay to the 2040 Plan on that one. I'd like to stay to the 2040 Plan on this one, which does allow for low-density housing in this area. Additionally, when we look at what's going on with this particular project, this project has gone through a number of iterations that I think are going to be an enhancement to the area. And I want to make sure everybody understands by, if you vote for this, this house is not going to remain there. It is going to turn around and be platted R2, and it is going to be developed. And they are going to take down that fence line, and they'll take down the tree line. And I travel this corridor almost daily. And I can tell you that it is the prettiest road we have here in Fishers. And I try to go ahead and protect that and protect the earth as much as possible. Paul Rio and Steve Harden, who I've had a number of conversations with, to go ahead and enhance this particular project have gone over and above everything that we've asked them to do in terms of getting this in there. My worry is that if we, if we don't pass this and we decide not to do that, your desire, some of the council members' desires to have it done in a different way, it is going to be done R2. And it'd be done with a lot less commitments, which I think Tony spoke to. I think staff has done an excellent job kind of outlining what's going on with this particular project. And again, this resides right around the corner from where I live. This is a corridor which I am extremely familiar with and passionate about because I wanted to make sure it was developed correctly. I believe straight R2 zoning is not the right zoning to have there because of the lack of commitments that would go be involved in a project like that. This particular project has a ton of extra commitments and enhancements to these projects. So again, I am a hundred percent for this project. I urge all of you to consider that. It is not not going to be developed. It absolutely will be developed. You're just saying, if I don't want the PUD with enhancements and the additional commitments, I'm fine having it be straight R2 zoning. So be it. That's your choice as a council member. But understand what you're going to have to go ahead then and talk to the residents about once it starts going in there with the additional bufferings and et cetera, et cetera. You know, those are my comments as it relates to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete, Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions. Thank you. I just really appreciate what the petitioner has done in terms of looking at what the comments have been by the council and trying to implement these comments to make this project better. I believe that this is the best use of this land by doing a PUD instead of an R2. I just really do worry that it's not going to be as nice. So those are all the comments I have. Does the petitioner have any additional comments or anything that you want to share before we vote?
This is Steve. I don't. Paul, do you?
I had to get my microphone off mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I have some comments. I've lived in Fishers for thirty-four years. I've done fourteen neighborhoods ranging in size from fourteen lots to six hundred lots. I've done over three thousand home sites. I've never presented anything disingenuously or misleading. R2 under the UDO allows what's called a conservancy plat. If you save up to forty percent of the natural areas or pay additional plantings to make that up, you're allowed to reduce the lot size by twenty percent. That's why the plan that the staff showed has lots that are eighty by one fifty instead of one hundred by one fifty. I just wanted to be clear that we're showing a real R2 plat that's been designed properly and not trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. I wouldn't do it. I don't do it, and that's not how I work in Fishers or anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to go ahead and call for a vote on...
Cecilia?
What's that?
I apologize, I just go out of order, but can I make one more comment?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I've just been thinking about it with all the different comments. I'm going to be supportive, but I want to mention a couple of additional things. Typically, at the beginning of the year, we have kind of a retreat. And I know over the last few months, we've heard that, well, you've got to do a PUD. And then we've also heard, well, you don't want to do a PUD because we don't exactly know what the underlying zoning is. And if you do that, then you go back to the standard zoning. But then we also hear the flip side of that, which is you have lesser requirements and things. So I'd like to do more of a deep dive. I'm not saying add a committee. I'm not saying add additional layers. But I think we need to talk as a group how we view that. Because if we always have, well, don't do the straight zoning, do a PUD, and then we go back and forth, I just, not a negative comment, it's just I heard us as a group kind of go back and forth over the last few months. So I think going forward, I think that we should spend some time. We typically have a retreat, and we should spend some time looking at the zoning, straight zoning versus a PUD. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Cecilia, I'd like to, sorry.
Go ahead. Sam?
I'd like to agree with what David just said there. One of the things that has been stressed to me many times is this is so much better than an R2. Well, if our R2 standards are that much that nobody wants to use them, we need to take a stricter look at what they are. And as a council, decide if we need to make them, if that's something we can do, we need to make them better. My thoughts.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, I'm going to... I'm sorry. I'm sorry, and I'm glad we're having this conversation. I'll just point out, too, there is confusion whether it's not intentional or not. I'm sure it's not. But the council action form does state that this PUD is based upon standards that are... that are R3 and R5, which are lower than R2. And then in the presentation, we're trying to compare it to R2. So, ag- again, I, I would like to second David's good suggestion there about just taking a deeper dive and articulating things very precisely and just being consistent with our evaluation.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I'm gonna go ahead and, and call for a vote on ordinance 111620A. And I'll ask Kim Griner to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Cecilia Kobel? Aye. Selena Stoller? Aye. David George?
Hi.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingard?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye. And it looks like Councilor DeLong has an extra voter with her right there. It was cute, Steve.
Brad DeReemer?
No.
Samantha DeLong?
Nay.
Jocelyn Dare? Nay. Thank you. That motion passes. We're gonna move on to item sixteen, 122120A. It's a request to approve a voluntary annexation of three parcels known as the Grantham PUD. I'm sorry, we're on seventeen. Sorry. Yeah, no, we're on sixteen. Sorry. So 112120A, this is the approval to, request to approve a voluntary annexation of the three parcels known as the Grantham PUD. The properties are located at 16065 Southeastern Parkway and it consists of one hundred and eighteen point seven five acres.
Can you see my screen?
So, uh, yes. And who's presenting?
Jesse Beauchelle.
Jesse. Okay. Thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome. For the record, Jesse Beauchelle with Planning and Zoning. Item before you is the Grantham PUD annexation. As we know, it's one hundred and eighteen point seven five acres and they are voluntarily annexing to, into the city so that they can have city services and connect to the sewer, that sort of thing. It's a public, it's first and second reading with a public hearing, so if there's anybody that would like to say anything, we're then welcome to.
Thank you, Jesse. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a, a public hearing. Chris, is there anyone there, a member of the public wishing to speak on this?
I'll have Tracy confirm that, but there were no comments submitted as well, President Kobel.
Okay. Tracy, is there anybody there?
No one present to speak on this matter.
Okay, I'll close the, uh, public, looks like there's, I see a hand raised here inside the-
Yeah, Council President Stoney, I just wanted to make sure again, with the annexation, the county's not part of the review process. Just wanted to note that was the last time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to give ordinance 122120A first reading?
Pete, motion approved.
Motion by Pete. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item seventeen, 122120B. This is a consideration of a rezone of one point eight two acres from R3 to PUD. Our property is located at 13995 Cumberland Road and it's the project known as the Cumberland Cottages. And it's for a first reading right now. And Tony Bogato with our, our Planning and Zoning Department will give the presentation.
Yeah, Jesse will present this one.
Yeah, I'll actually be presenting this as well, yes. For the record, Jesse Beauchelle with Planning and Zoning. Uh, the item before you is Cumberland Cottages. The organization HAND, a nonprofit organization based out of Noblesville, is looking to rezone 13995 Cumberland Road, which is currently zoned R3 with R5 to the west, R4 to the east and R4 to the south. They are coming in to propose a project that would have eleven detached units that would be for rent only, that are geared towards single parents. HAND does a lot of proj, or most of the projects that HAND does is related to seniors, affordable, it's an affordable housing project that would be geared towards the, uh, single family, or single parent families so that they could have a place to live, those that, you know, work in the restaurant industry, that sort of thing, so that there is a place to live in the city of Fishers. Just to give you a site plan overview here, they plan on having a ride-in and ride-out on 141st Street and a ride-out anticipated onto Cumberland Road. Just to give you a little bit of idea of the amenities that they're proposing here, it's a low-maintenance plantings. So the eleven units would have a central green in the middle of them that have common area. Along with that, they would have a community gardens that would allow for them to have fresh produce and vegetables that would be in the area. And they plan on using a rainwater, retent, dried attention pond as their, for their dried attention along Cumberland Road to add to the aesthetics of the area. Give you an idea of the cottages, all of them have a front porch. I'll just give you an elevation detail in proportion there. Natural ventilation and they are proposing to have rain capture for plantings on the houses to be connected to the gutters. So u- utilizing sustainable products. Just to give you an idea of the materials that they're using here, ship lap, accent siding with additional lap siding. As you see, there's the porch with the overhang and entry, panel siding, recesses and vinyl windows. What they are proposing from an elevation standpoint, which it will have to go before our PUD committee, but it does meet our UDO standards. So I wanted to point that out. And as stated, this is the first reading of this project. So as we know, the first reading is to introduce you to the project so that we can discuss it and get any feedback. And the petitioner is on the line as well, if you have any further comments or any suggestions so that we can move forward with this to Plan Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. Andrea Davis from HAND, would you like to share any additional information?
I'm not sure I have additional information. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I will tell you, we have hosted two neighborhood, or two meetings that we've invited neighbors to, to get their feedback on our early plans. This will come, this idea will be, be a lot more developed by the next time council sees it. But we, we've gotten generally positive feedback from neighbors so far.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a discussion if additional comments or questions would like to be shared by the council members, David or Todd Zimmerman? Do you have any comments or questions?
No, no, no comments or questions.
Okay. Sam DeLong?
I'd just like to say I'm excited for this project. I think it's gonna fill a missing piece, allow families to stay closer together. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Brad DeReemer?
I think it's great. I really appreciate HAND doing this. It's what we need. So thank you very much for bringing us here.
John Weingard?
No question this time. Thank you.
Jocelyn Dare?
I'm enthusiastic about this project. I'm familiar with HAND's work across the county and they do very thoughtful projects. And the other thing I'll mention, until very recently, I lived right across the street from this proposed area. And I also think it's a good fit for that particular area, Fishers. Thank you.
Thank you. David George?
Nothing at this time. Thanks.
Okay. Pete Peterson?
None, thanks.
Okay. Selena Stoller?
Yeah, there's some things, I mean, I, I like the fact that we're targeting some low-income individuals. I would like to see it, you know, to offer them home ownership rather than just rentals. I'd like to see some of these people to be able to own a home within our community as well. The other thing is, I would like to see it opened up to more than just single parents. I mean, why can't we open it up to those with disabilities or with seniors or those that have other situations rather than just single parents? Because I think we have a lot of people within our community that have different situations that life has handed them. And I'd like to see it be supportive of all. But I, I keep going back to, I, I would love this community developed as more of a home ownership with assistance that would help these people to be able to own their homes. I think it would help them take more pride within their community.
Cecilia, can I respond?
Sure.
Okay. Just, I just wanted to respond to a couple of your points, which are excellent ones. First of all, related to the home ownership question, the, the folks who live in, in HAND's affordable housing products can earn no more than sixty percent of the area median income. And so for that reason, a lot of, a lot of our residents wouldn't qualify to, for home ownership yet. We're sort of a step on the continuum. Rather than lease a market rate unit where they might be paying two thousand dollars a month, by, by being able to provide something that would be a little bit more affordable for them, would allow them to save money for a down payment and that sort of thing. We're hoping folks who live in, in any of our project, any of our properties, just see this as a step on their journey in life and not necessarily the final destination. And, and the, the property certainly would be open to more than just single, single parents. That's just one of, we know from the research that HAND does every five years into the housing needs of Hamilton County, that there's a huge need for, um, single earners who need more than one bedroom. There's just really not a lot of, of options out there for them that are remotely affordable for someone on one income. That's why we identified about, at least thirty percent of the units will be for single parents, but they certainly would be open to anyone else who meets the income qualifications. They are proposed to be story, one and a half stories, so there would be stairs and then up, and then up, you know, upstairs. So that's why we haven't necessarily targeted folks with disabilities or seniors because stairs tend to be a, a, something they're not looking for. But, but we certainly would be open to anyone who qualifies income-wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. I don't have any questions at this time. Do I have a motion to give ordinance 122120B a first reading?
Motion.
Motion by-
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn Dare. Okay, thank you. So ordinance 122120B is given first reading. And now, now it'll go to the Plan Commission for a public hearing and consideration before returning back to the city council. So we're gonna move on to item eighteen, 111620B. This is a consideration of a text amendment to the City of Fishers Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, to modify certain sections that have been identified. This is the, the final reading. And is it Tony, are you gonna be giving the presentation?
Yes, I'll be presenting this. I presented the full ordinance at first reading. I wasn't planning on going at all line item again. If you have any questions or comments, I can go through those. But again, this is a cleanup ordinance. There's different sections of the code, either through just kinda errors or found, uh, missing gaps from the 2018 update. It did go to Plan Commission, received support. Again, this is just considered an annual cleanup. There's no major changes that I would highlight to say that there's an issue or, or anything like that. So with that, staff would be available for any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 111620B?
So moved.
Motion by John Weingard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena Stoller. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for any discussion or comments, questions. Todd Zimmerman?
No comments or questions.
Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
Brad DeReemer?
None, thank you.
John Weingard?
No questions. Thank you.
Jocelyn Dare?
Pardon. No, thank you.
David George?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Okay. Pete Peterson?
None.
Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote on ordinance 11620B and ask Kim to take a roll call vote. Thank you. Cecilia Kobel? Aye. Selena Stoller? Aye. David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingard?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Brad DeReemer?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Dare?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item nineteen. It's an ordinance 122120C. This is a request to approve a voluntary annexation of two lots known as the Watson-Robinson Properties located at 13097 and 13031 Cynthia Road. And it consists of four point eight acres. This is up for a public hearing and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Tony Bogato for the presentation.
Yeah, Jesse will present as well.
Yep, I'll be, for the record, Jesse Beauchelle with Planning and Zoning. The item before you is the Watson-Robinson voluntary annexation. Just to give you some background information, Mr. Watson and Mr. Robinson went before our BVA several months ago to get, uh, development standards variances for 13097 Cynthia Road. Mr. Watson is looking to subdivide his property and also subdivide his, uh, back part of his property here and give it to Ms., or sell it to Mr. Robinson to just clean up the lines. So as part of the variance, they agreed to annex into the city. Also, this is going through, just went through our TAC Committee for primary plat and will go to, to plat committee in January for the plat. If anybody has anything, this is four point eight acres and it is contiguous and is just to the east of Hunter's Run and west of Britton Falls.
Thank you, Jesse. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Tracy, is there anyone there at City Hall wishing to speak?
No, there is none.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me?
Yes.
My name, my name's Peter Watson. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay.
I'm the, I'm the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to give the ordinance 11, I'm sorry, ordinance 122120C the first reading?
First reading.
Uh, that Todd Zimmerman?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. Okay. We're moving on to item twenty and item twenty-
President Kobel?
Yes.
That was a public hearing, so we have to have a vote on the-
We had the public hearing, Jesse.
Yeah, we did. Okay. Um, we're gonna move on to item twenty. Item twenty is 122120D, the request to approve a voluntary annexation of two lots known as Hoosier Estates located at 11240 and 11280 East 106th Street, consisting of approximately one point two two acres. And this also requires a public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Jesse.
I'm gonna switch it up. This is Ross Hillary, City of Fishers Planning and Zoning Department. No problem. Before you tonight is item 122120D, Hoosier Estates, Lot 2RB and 2RC. It is a request to approve a voluntary annexation of two lots known as Hoosier Road located at 11240 and 11280 East 106th Street, consisting of approximately one point two two acres. The secondary plat for these two lots was recorded in February of 2016. The property is zone RT residential. Currently, a house is under construction at 11280 East 106th Street, the western property. And the property has been cleared at 11240, the eastern property, in anticipation of a house- in anticipation of a house construction in two thousand and twenty-one. Before you tonight, the proposed timeline includes first and second reading and public hearing tonight. We'll have the fiscal report and the final reading in January. And the effective date of the annexation will be in February. Staff recommends that council has a combined first and second reading and the public hearing for the annexation of Hoosier Estates Lots two RB and two RC, adding additional one point and two two acres and two newly constructed homes to the city corporate limits. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Ross. So gonna go ahead and open this up for, um, public comment. Is, is there anyone there at City Hall wishing to speak on this, um...
No ma'am, no one present.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, do I have a motion to give ordinance one two two one two zero D first and second reading?
Motion.
Uh, motion by Selena?
Sam.
Sam, okay. Thank you. Um, we're gonna move on to item twenty-one. Item twenty-one is one two two one two zero E, the request to approve a voluntary annexation of two lots known as McNeely Properties located at one zero seven six five east one hundred and twenty-first Street in Fishers. And it consists of one point six five acres. And this also requires a public hearing.
Hi, this is Trevor Preddy, the Planning and Zoning Department. Uh, so this, uh, request is located at, uh, one zero seven six five east one hundred and twenty-first Street. It is, uh, two lots, um, uses a residential, uh, single-family residence, which is zone R two residential. This site had a non-remunstration agreement, um, on file with, uh, the city, uh, meaning that they would volun- or obligated themselves to annex, um, as soon as they were legally able and we've determined that they are. Uh, before you, you can see the timeline. These are two lots settling one point six five acres. Um, we're proposing that today we would have first and second reading and a public hearing. And then on, uh, the January council, uh, hearing, we would have third reading and adoption. Staff is recommending that city council have first, second reading and public hearing today.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Um, is there anyone there at City Hall wishing to speak?
No one present for this matter.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, um... Chris, did we get any, any public comments on any of these iden- of this item?
We did not.
Okay. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to give ordinance one two one two zero E first and second reading?
So moved. This is David.
David, thank you David. Okay, we're gonna, uh, move on to item twenty-two. One two two one two zero F. It's a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as Clark Property located at one three four eight five Howe Road. It consists of two acres and this also, um, is up for first and second reading and requires a public hearing. I'll go ahead. I'm not sure who, who's presenting on this.
It'll be me again. This is Trevor with, um, Planning and Zoning Department.
Okay, thank you Trevor.
So, um, very similar case to, uh, the last one we just heard. Um, another one-off residential property off of Howe Road, one three four eight five, um, Howe Road. We have a non-remunstration agreement on file of this property, which means that property owners obligated themselves to annex as soon as they were, um, legally able to and we've determined that they are. The property is zone R two residential in totals two acres and there is one lot. And again, um, similar situation to the last. We're, uh, proposing for the timeline, uh, first and second reading and public hearing today. And in the January council hearing, a third reading and adoption for February, uh, effective date of annexation. Staff, uh, does recommend first and second reading, get held today with the public hearing.
Uh, thank you Trevor. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for, uh, the public comment. Um, is there anyone at City Hall there to speak on this?
No ma'am, no one present.
Okay. Chris, did we get any, any public comments on the issue?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to give ordinance one two two one two zero F first and second reading?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Selena Stoller, thank you. We're moving on to item twenty-three. Uh, this is one two two one two zero G, consideration of a text amendment of the Plan Unit Development Ordinance number zero nine one nine one six E, known as the Vermillion PUD, to reduce the minimum setbacks of ten lots. And I'm gonna turn it over to, um...
It, it'll be me again, uh, Trevor with the Planning and Zoning Department.
Trevor, thank you.
Um, so, uh, part of the, uh, Vermillion, um, planned unit development, um, the Woods neighborhood, um, section four was required to have some grading changes by, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers. So here you can see the location of that off of one hundred first. It's in the southern part of the Vermillion neighborhood. And it is, is part a, of a PUD ordinance, um, residential PUD ordinance. Um, and as a result of those grading changes requested by the Army Corps of Engineers, um, the builders are requesting, uh, reduction of set, minimum front yard setbacks on ten lots in section five to, by ten feet, from thirty feet to twenty feet, um, so that they can fit homes on those lots. And, um, and you can see below, the projected timeline today would be first reading. Um, and then we would anticipate, uh, Plan Commission review and recommendation in January for a final, um, second and third reading and adoption in February. So before you, you can see, um, two, uh, it's, uh, two exhibits of the, um, plat that exists, or that they're proposing for the, uh, lots. So on the left, um, you can see the current lots which have thirty-foot setbacks, um, in the front yard. And in the right, twenty-foot setbacks. In addition to these changes, a few lots have been removed, um, to minimize the number of lots that would be affected by these changes. Um, but again, builders are seeking these changes in response to grading requirements made by the Army Corps of Engineers for this site. I do believe that they are on the line. Um, Doug Wagner, um, and Jim Pence, uh, are available to answer any questions or if you have anything else to share.
Do both of you have anything else to share at this time?
Uh, this is Jim Pence. The only thing I would like to point out is this is, um, Vermillion, uh, the Woods at Vermillion, section four, not section five. Section five's already been platted.
Thank you Jim, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, this, this is Doug Wagner. The only thing I would add at this stage is, uh, it's only six lots that we are reducing the front building setback. Um, we did lose a lot. We did, in the redesign of doing this, trying to make everything fit as best as we could, we did reduce one lot. We removed lot three oh one on that southern cul-de-sac, Ard- Ardendale Court. Um, but felt that, uh, we needed to reduce the building setback on the other lots that backed up to the ravine, um, to allow for better backyards in that area. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Doug. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for discussion, uh, comments or questions by city council members. Uh, David George?
Nothing right now, thanks.
Okay. Todd Zimmerman?
Uh, none.
Uh, Brad Derimer?
No comment.
Sam DeLong?
No comments or questions.
John Weingard?
No questions.
Uh, Jocelyn Dare?
None, thank you.
Uh, Pete Peterson?
None.
Uh, Selena Stoller?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to give ordinance one two two one two zero G first reading?
So moved.
Uh, thank you Selena Stoller. So ordinance one two two one two zero G was, uh, given first reading and will go to the Plan Commission for a public hearing. And then it will go back to, uh, City Council for consideration. Thank you. We're now gonna move on, um, to regular items, number twenty-four. Any unfinished or new business? Chris, do we have anything?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to community comments. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, uh, comments could be submitted prior to the city council meeting and they were, uh, comments were received and provided and distributed to the city council. And comments were placed on the record for this month's meeting as if, uh, people from the public presented those, uh, comments in, in person during the community comment section. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for the community comments at, at City Hall. Uh, Tracy, do we have anybody there wishing to speak?
No ma'am, no one here to speak.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the community comment. Um, I just wanna thank everybody for, um, all of their work this year as, uh, we're finishing and winding down two thousand and twenty, the staff. I think everybody's done an e- excellent job with, with what the task is at hand and, and trying to manage everything. I, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and a happy and safe two thousand and twenty-one. And, um, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John Weingard. Thank you very much everybody. You have a, a safe holiday and we'll see you in two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting is no longer being recorded or transcribed.
Kim, thanks for your help. It's Chris.